You go. All right, go ahead.
I don't know.
I know she'd be accepting any call.
She's smart.
Yeah, she is.
Good, like, her work, like.
Yeah.
It's amazing.
Yeah, they are.
Yeah, you can hear. That may not, is that even quite good?
Does now.
The plants are really pretty. The plants are really pretty.
They're pretty.
They really are. Plants are pretty.
They're really pretty.
They're really pretty.
When she does the roll call?
Uh, yeah, right after.
You ready? Call this meeting to order, please show me the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome tonight. It's kind of new, we've got live mics here, so it's a little bit louder. We've invited some very special people here, all those people smiling and grinning and laughing back there. We wanted to be sure and recognize, first, the people that retired at the end of last year, which was, of course, craziness. Everybody looks forward to walking out that last day with, you know, everything lifting off your shoulders, and instead you ran out in March and never got a goodbye. So, we want to make sure and recognize you tonight, since we didn't do that last year. So, oh, I'm sorry, I jumped right in, I'm so excited about these people. I forgot this last time, too. Okay, roll call.
Steve Bone.
Yes.
Robin Clausen.
Yes.
Brad Waldau.
Yes.
Jill Wenley.
Yes.
Jane Lindner.
Yes.
Chad Thompson.
Yes.
Chad Thompson is joining us on the phone tonight, from Utah. All right, back to our celebration of all of you special people. We want to start by recognizing the people that retired last year. So, I know some of you are already standing, but, and you got your goodies last year. I know that that's always kind of a, you think, okay, all those years and this is what I got. But it really is nice later to look back on. So, if you're not already standing, if you would stand when I say your name and your years and so on. If you're standing already, you could kind of wave maybe at everyone. All right, Becky Parker, EJHS teacher for 26 years in Unit 40. Becky Pino, from Central, teacher for 30 years in the district. Mary Dust, teacher at Central for 25 years in the district. Sue Ann Minor, EJHS guidance counselor for 23 years in the district. And not with us tonight, Jamie Jennings, teacher at Central for 33 years. Jenny Frickel, EJHS guidance counselor for 28 years in the district. Linda Richards, ELC music teacher for 23 years. Sherry Cochran, bookkeeper at the board office for 34 years. Charlotte West, transportation, bus aide and cashier for 12 years. Sharon Chestnut, Central secretary, 33 years. Dawn Byram, head cook, South Side, for 20 years. Jo Fremeth, bus driver, transportation, 19 years. And Greg Langford, who's no longer with us, but ELC head custodian for 27 years. And then Wayne Stuhmeyer, transportation, bus driver, for 24 years. And Irene Stuhmeyer, South Side cashier, halftime secretary, for nine years. Okay, if we could have all of you up here, Penny's going to take a group picture.
There we go, Wayne, you go in between. You go back that way. There we go. Good, good, good. You want to put her in? You go here. I'm good at ballsing my butt. Very good. I could text you guys this picture later. Okay, so now we're going to do Irene and Wayne, I want to do them separately, because they didn't get their things last year. Can you probably just stand right here and do it, is that okay? Wayne, why don't you just stand right here and you can just hold it if you want, or do it if you want. Irene, will you stand here? Okay. So I can see your flowers. You can hold your brick if you want. Um, I don't. You want to hold it, go through. I can cover. Hold up. There we go. All right. Okay, so we'll leave the birthday band in the ground.
All right, we'll move right along to those lucky people that are leaving this year. All right. First, if, this time, if you would stand, or stand and come up here, Penny is going to give you your goodies, individually, when I call your name, all right? Kelly Anderson, it's first, elementary teacher, 35 years in the district. The next is Ron Reed, and he's not with us this evening, but he's a science teacher at EHS for 19 years. Shannon Hinkle, EHS guidance counselor for 28 years. Kathy White, secretary, South Side, Funkhauser, East Side, ELC, she's been everywhere. Kathy Hilli, secretary, cashier, for 18 years. She's also been in almost every building. Pauline Sapp, head cook, Edgewood Mason, and of course, EHS, for 35 years. Next is Patricia Hernandez, and I don't think that Patricia's with us this evening, but she was our ELL teacher for 26 years. And Mary Al Gilbers, bus driver, 27 years. All right, now if we could get a group picture of this year's retirees up here, that would be great.
You're welcome to stay, but we certainly appreciate being here. Penny, the ones that are, the plants are going, correct?
Yeah, the plants.
So, thank you very much for all your years of service, we're glad we could honor especially both years. So, thank you for coming, see you.
We got flower petals all over the floor.
Like a little wedding.
Yeah. Okay, we'll move along now that we've got a little more space here. Next is recognition of visitors. Do we have any visitors tonight that would like to address the board?
My name is Kes.
You come to the microphone, so the people at home can hear you, okay?
Sure, obviously, I should have done this a long time ago, so I'm not quite sure the rules. Am I allowed just to openly speak, or do you guys have some kind of format you follow?
Okay, you can speak, we have, we limit each speaker to five minutes. All right, so, and then, the only thing we ask speakers to do is to, you know, respect everyone and be civil, so. And introduce yourself. Introduce yourself.
My name is Kesme Estrada, Quincy Riley's mom. I was, first and foremost, I want to know why the press release was done 11 days after the fact, and after asking you to reword it, because I asked Quincy, in his own words, and he said, "They never cared before, they're nothing but liars, why did they word it that way?" So, Mr. Don, would you care to explain why you done that, and why it was 11 days after my son tried to commit suicide because of your administration?
Well, this is your opportunity to address the board, so I'm not going to be answering questions.
Okay, can you tell me what?
And the board will not be answering questions tonight.
So, nobody, so I'm just supposed to speak? That's perfect, you're listening to me finally. You have known for several years, Mr. Don, and Educate, Board of Education, that there is an adult administration bullying problem in your school system. That man right there, which is Quincy's grandpa, sat in the office a couple of years ago after Quincy got blasted in the face with a basketball on your school, your Unit 40 property school at recess. I asked for that to be investigated, my dad did too, and I couldn't get any answers there. Then it went on and on, I called an emergency IEP meeting two weeks before Quincy tried to commit suicide because of your administration. I'm sure you read over the IEP, I encourage everybody to read over the IEP. I begged them, I begged them in the IEP, to please stop doing this to him, I begged them to stop doing it to me. I've also had six months hardcore proof, going to doctors, Quincy talked to psychiatrists and that sort of thing, of like, the downfall of Quincy's, you know, mental health. He had As and Bs, he was an honorable student for the most part, all the way up until last January. In January, I said that Quincy was down to one special education class, and I wanted him to be full-time, regular class. That's when the bullying and intimidation got worse. It got worse because, I assume and allegedly, it's because the school gets more money for any kid with IEPs, and special education funding. I think everybody needs to take a look at the budget here, because when you look at the school report card, you guys have a budgeting problem. Okay, I want to know where the special education money's going, because it's not going towards the schools. I'm here tonight because I'm sure you've got the Quincy Jude Riley versus, versus Unit 40 papers, and if you haven't from the Board of Education, you will. Number 18 on that thing, on that list, is why I'm here. Take a look at 18, read it real well, I suggest, anyway. You have known for, about everything that's going on, you are overpaid, and I think your salary on the internet shows it. You gave yourself quite the raise in the last couple of years, or somebody, somebody okayed this, I'm no accountant, but I don't think an accountant, it doesn't take one, to look to see that there's a huge problem with budgeting the money in your district. My son shouldn't have to pay the price for your adult bullying, you were very, 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 very aware. The whole school was aware, every administrator was fully aware, he could not take no more. He has went through 15 years of special education, he started an early intervention at eight months old. He has worked his butt off in behavioral, occupational, developmental, and speech therapy. He has been to BAN doctors, which stands for defeat autism now. I have collected his bowel movements and urine for testing to prove he has autism. He fought hard, he never had a problem like this in his prior district here, Phil Illinois is an hour and a half away from here. Every teacher has contacted me, reached out, special education, nobody at your office did, and when you did, it was 11 days after the fact, which looks really suspicious. There was no sense in doing what you done to him for ultimately greed, because you guys can't budget your bills. Okay, all I can say, you was fully aware, since nobody's answering questions, let me know when my time's up, because I got three years of stuff I could talk about. I have several emails, you hired an athletic director who has a hothead to run your school that is financially deficit. He came from Shelbyville, he was all in the green on the report card, he was an athletic director, he admitted he only took some classes. I, too, have taken astronomy and chemistry, I am no astronaut or chemist. He should have never been in the position he was in, because he's rubbing elbows with right people. You guys know that you target the underprivileged, the proof's in the pudding. Just because you can't budget your bills right, does not mean you systematically abuse children emotionally, till they have behavior problems, till you call their parents 100 times at work, like you didn't me. And once again, I have proof of all this, you know how many conversations I have with my boss at Heartland Dental to tell her that the school's calling yet again, sometimes it would be important, and sometimes it wouldn't, but looking back, it was all lies. Remember the IEP? You guys told me that you watched cameras, he never came into the school, called me an hour later, said he made it the first hour and everything, that was a bold-faced lie, you never watched cameras. He's also been quarantined more than any other kid in this school, top three, top five, allegedly, whatever you want me to use to make you feel better. I don't believe you ever watched cameras, I don't believe he was ever six feet, or three feet, or whatever the rule was at the time, I thought, I think you didn't want to deal with him, that was the easy way out. He was, the 60 days right there, you got the quarantine, then the out-of-school suspension. And I'm going to, I'm going to finish one line. If I demand a retract of his absentee's for May 7th through the end of this time, you'd be unexcused, I don't know if you wanted him to get up and take his ventilator and show up at your school, or show up at home, so you can put him down as out-of-school suspension. It was disrespectful, degrading, and amongst 100 other words I could throw out right now, but I'm trying to remain calm. If anybody in this room needs proof of everything for three years, especially the last six months, proof, facts, facts of Judy Crease and Seacrest, you and yourself, half these people that worked with him in IEP meetings, signed on, that's a contract. You said you'd keep my son safe, you failed to do so, and not only that, there's hundreds of allegations from sexual misconduct and everything else. Why was the school open, 11 days, 11 days? And you guys, they turned on their computers, so they weren't working, every day the school was open, they'd get money. For money and greed. My son almost lost his life for money and greed. Did you think you could push him? Did you guys really think you could push him and push him, and he wouldn't rise above you, you were wrong, weren't you? What would you have done this, this day if he died? Well, if I'd have stood, I could have planned a protest, I planned a funeral, would that make you feel better, Mr. Don? Could you sleep better at night like that? You know, you were fully aware, everybody in your upper administration was fully aware he mentally could not take no more. And he kept doing it, I have medical records on my part, medical records on Quincy's part, and I know that you think you're educated, but there's a psychiatric team at Children's Hospital who said otherwise about your staff.
Okay, we're going to have to ask you to close if you could.
I'm going to, okay, I'll finish it out. I want it retracted, I want the statement, the release, the press release. You used my son's attempted suicide because of you guys to cushion the blow before you announced your investigation. I will not stop, I will work you through every agency, and I will not stop, and when you guys go to your new jobs after, hopefully, they take your license, I will let that school know too, that you're a threat to society and to kids in general. I am recommending that anybody in the upper administration, including Mr. Don himself, even if he's retiring, to be, have any license or anything, their license revoked, and their certificates revoked, including that not limited to Jeanette Buescher. Do some background checks, hopefully you guys realize that she was fired from Little Lambs for doing drugs on the job, and then you put her in a classroom to whisper in my kids' ear and threaten.
Thank you, thank you for coming to see her. Change needs to happen. Okay, do we have any other visitors that would like to address the board this evening? Okay, I think we were going to have Nancy.
I think you did a damn good job.
I would like to say a word. Five minutes. I'm Quincy's grandma. My name is Sherri Atkins. I spent five days in St. Louis Children's Hospital with my grandson, three, which was on ventilator, and we didn't know whether he was going to live or die. I spent five days, I spent three of those days watching my grandson nonstop, and wondered if my daughter was going to be the next one I had to hospitalized. There's too much proof here, and you know what it all boils down to? Whose fault this is? Yours. Because you let it happen. All these people that work for you, you're responsible. I say, cut the head off the snake, and everything will get better.
I'm not going to need five minutes.
Okay, would you, the people at home can hear you if you talk in the microphone, thank you.
I'm Quincy's uncle, Josh, and I'd just like to know, when you guys take this matter up, do you care to do it in open sessions rather than closed session? I believe that what was done in the dark's going to come to light anyways, please just don't drag it out. Let's get this matter resolved in a short, not lengthy amount of time. And let's all just do what's right here, I think it's obvious there's an issue, and it's time to stand up for some of these kids, something's got to change, there's a lot of people with issues here. Thank you, guys.
Is there anyone else? Okay, Nancy, that would.
We want to make clear that every statement that we made at the last board meeting were all items that were put in writing. All of these letters have been submitted to schools, school board, and Mr. Don, regarding issues that have happened over in the past. These date from September 2016 until March of 2021. Our reason for making those statements was so that the current board would understand that our kids have been subject to discrimination many times over the years, and to realize that racism is in our schools. Also note that those were just a few examples of incidents that have occurred. We have taken each of our concerns to administrators, Mr. Don, and sitting board members. Administrators and board members have changed over the years, but Mr. Don has been the superintendent during the entire time. We are confused as to why the press release was issued claiming that you are all surprised. In some instances, action was taken, but in many instances, our concerns were made light of and simply ignored. We have sat in meetings with Mr. Don to discuss issues regarding our son, and our concerns were disregarded then, and we feel as if that continues. The press release also stated that we do not tolerate nor ignore allegations of racism, and we thoroughly investigate and take action when warranted on every complaint and concern that is brought to our attention. That sounds great, but the reality is, it's not true. No investigation was done when we brought our concerns to Mr. Don when Colin was in eighth grade. As a matter of fact, nothing was done at all. We received so little support from the superintendent that we pulled our son from the junior high and homeschooled him. We also submitted a letter to all of, all of you on March 25th. We expressed our concerns for the way the situation regarding our son wearing a durag was handled at the school level. We asked why our son was not allowed a warning, why he was mandated to remove a durag despite him explaining the need to wear it, despite me explaining why he needed to wear it, and despite the doctor explaining why he needed to wear it. So apparently, now our administrators are authorized to determine the validity of a doctor's note. We asked why, we asked you why it was acceptable for staff members to embarrass and humiliate our son, as they did. We asked why him standing up for his civil rights made him both disrespectful and insubordinate. We stated that we thought our son was being discriminated against by these staff members because other students were wearing headwear, but they were not being asked to remove it, only Colin. We also feel there's discrimination due to the fact that they were so adamant that Colin not be allowed to wear this garment, that they even ignored the doctor. They simply did not care that Colin had a true need to wear this garment for just a couple of days, nor did they care that he was required to complete his school day with his braid sticking out and looking disheveled. He was punished for being different, and then publicly humiliated by your staff, and no one seems to care. District policy states that no person, including a school district employee or agent or student, shall harass, intimidate, or bully a student on the basis of actual or perceived race, color, national, origin, or military status. The district will not tolerate harassing, intimidating, conduct, or bullying, whether verbal, physical, sexual, or visual, that affects tangible benefits of education. verbal, physical, sexual, or visual, that affects tangible benefits of education, that unreasonably interferes with the student's educational performance, or that creates an intimidating, hostile, or offensive, offensive educational environment. That is your policy, and we see you doing nothing to uphold it. Colin was humiliated and embarrassed to the point that since this incident, our son has now been placed on medication to overcome depression and anxiety. He has never taken either of these medications, but needed both just to cope with being in that school. Now I want you to think about that statement. Our son had to be medicated to cope with being at school. Will it take another student trying to end their lives before you take action against the behavior of your staff? Is that what it takes in order for you to take these issues seriously? I certainly hope not. We also stated that our son no longer felt safe in the school, and we asked what you were going to do about it. Due to him feeling discriminated against and harassed, it is not an environment conducive to learning. What have you done to change this? Our son has the right to an education, but some of your staff is creating an environment that makes learning very difficult for him and many others. I will ask again, what are you going to do about it? All of these concerns were in that letter, and not one time has anyone contacted us to discuss, clarify, or rectify the situation. To our knowledge, no investigation has taken place, and we are again made to feel that our concerns are dismissed and ignored. If you stand behind the words in your press release and you truly care about not allowing discrimination, why has no one tried to talk to us about our experiences or how we can work to make a change within Unit 40? I'm also here tonight to inquire on the request made at the March 22nd meeting. We ask that an addendum be applied to the dress code policy and allow for durags for the students of color. However, that request has been ignored, and now you are voting on whether to keep the policy the same or remove it completely. What happened to our request? Neither of these options indicate your desire to be inclusive, and neither of these options acknowledge that students of color have different needs, and your unwillingness to be inclusive in itself is discrimination. I brought in a couple items. This item here is acceptable to wear at EHS. This item is not. You can't see, you see everything through this. This works for 95% of your student population, they're all white. It does not work for the student population, your 1% that is black. They need it to cover the entire head, to retain the oils, to hold the hair down. It has a purpose. This will damage their hair. Yet the students wear it on an almost daily basis, the girls wear it to hold their hair back. I was told by Mr. Pullen that my son chooses to wear his hair that way, and he's really sorry he doesn't have something to keep his hair out of his eyes. And told him he could wear this. What good is that point to do him? Again, the policy says no headwear, but this is accepted. So if we accept an item that is good for 95% of our population and we make an exception for those white students, why can't we make an exception for our 1% to wear this, for a true need that protects their hair? I would also like to have some clarification as to why my son wearing a durag makes him disrespectful or a safety concern. We asked this at the last letter and have yet to be given an answer. How is it that a student of color wearing a durag makes them both disrespectful and a safety concern, but at the last board meeting, our senior football players came in, three of which were wearing ball caps? The coach, two administrators, six board members, and a superintendent, all of you saw it, nobody said a word, but you clapped and gave them accolades. I ventured to guess that if our son walked in wearing a durag, he wouldn't be given the same treatment. Did any of you feel disrespected or unsafe? No, you didn't, because you're used to seeing white boys wearing baseball caps. You're not used to seeing black boys wearing a durag. Just because it's not your normal doesn't make it wrong or bad. It's called diversity. This is our third time before the board regarding this issue, and it's time for closure and acceptance of a legal, fair, and compassionate response to our request and the request of the ACLU. Our current policy is discriminatory. It engages harmful stereotypes about what a valued student should physically look like and sends a message to the children of color that only students who adhere to a narrow, Eurocentric aesthetic are acceptable. Your vote to not include this addendum or to not change our current policy indicates where you stand on the issues of racism and discrimination. It is time for you to prove to the students and families of color that you recognize and acknowledge that they have different needs for their skin and hair, that you understand those needs, and that you are willing to be more inclusive. Duda is right for all of the students of Unit 40, not just the majority. Be the change. Our kids deserve it.
Okay, we're going to have Penny read a letter that we received from the ACLU into the meeting.
Okay. We write to express our strong concern that Effingham High School's policy banning headwear was enforced against a student of color for headwear that is important both culturally and for hygienic purposes. We understand that the school required Mr. Colin Marcheski to remove his durag and then suspended him because he was upset after being targeted on account of race. Enforcing Section 9.20 of Effingham High School Student Handbook, Personal Habits and Dress Code Against Students of Color Who Wear Durags Is Discrimatory. The policy should be changed. A durag is a piece of cloth worn primarily by black men and people of color that protects, moisturizes, and maintains hairstyles and holds cultural meaning. A policy that bans durags is prohibited. Headwear and fails to recognize its cultural import raises serious concerns under anti-discrimination laws and creates an inequitable learning environment for students, excuse me, for students like Colin, especially when white students apparently wear various kinds of headgear without consequence. The ACLU of Illinois therefore urges Unit 40's school board to reconsider this policy and allow students to wear durags. Number one, Effingham High School's headwear ban has harmed Colin because of his race. Colin, one of the few students of color of Effingham High School, was targeted for using headwear that is linked to his race. The durag is of cultural significance for people of color who use it to manage their natural hair. During the last Unit 40 school board meeting, Superintendent Mark Don said about the headwear ban, "We don't have anything that's acceptable except cultural and religious things." Importantly, there is no explicit exception for cultural and religious headwear in the written policy itself. Effingham High School staff shamed and embarrassed Colin in front of his white peers for wearing a durag. When he became upset about removing the headwear that kept his hair from drying out, cracking, and falling out, the school suspended him without warning, potentially affecting his ability to attend college or receive scholarships. When he complied with the school orders and took the durag off, his hair did in fact dry out and crack. The school administration also questioned the validity of a letter from Colin's doctor that attempted to educate the school about the durag's hygienic value for people of color and those to continue to ban all headwear. Further, a quick review of publicly available photos of Effingham High School students gathered at school or school-sponsored events shows that white students use headwear apparently without school response. White student anecdotes about wearing baseball caps and bandanas in school without issues support this conclusion. Even if the school's policy were applied to all types of headwear equally, though, asking someone to remove a baseball hat does not have the same racial implications as asking a student of color to remove a durag protecting their hair. In order to protect students of color, dress codes must recognize that prohibiting certain headwear or hairstyles is a proxy for racial discrimination. Effingham High School's policies and practices may run afoul of the Civil Rights Laws prohibit discrimination against students based on race, including the Illinois Human Rights Act and Title VI of the 1964 Civil Rights Act, among others. Number two, a policy banning durags creates an inequitable learning environment that devalues students of color. By prohibiting students of color from wearing durags, Effingham High School fails to live up to its own mission to create, educate, and inspire lifelong learners, effective communicators, confident leaders, and responsible citizens, and also fails to ensure equal educational opportunity to all students regardless of race as the school's student handbook promises. The policy banning durags deploy harmful stereotypes about what a valued student should physically look like and sends the message to children of color that only students that adhere to narrow, Eurocentric aesthetic are acceptable. The ban targeting Colin as a student of color has left him feeling isolated and fearful. It has stemming his ability to attend in-person school and dismantled his learning. The policy as applied to durags in Colin has also distracted other students from their learning process. When Colin tried to voice his concerns over disparate treatment, he was excessively punished with suspension. The ban targeting Colin as a student of color has affected his ability to effectively communicate and feel hurt. Finally, hairstyle in Illinois has been a major part of looking and feeling confident for people of color. The policy prohibiting durags has harmed Colin's ability to embody his culture and feel confident in his natural hair. The majority of teachers, administrators, and students in Unit 40's school district are white. According to the National Center for Education Statistics in the 2019-20 school year, Effingham High School had 754 students, six were black, 21 were multiracial. Acknowledging and remanding biased policies and procedures is vital in a school district like Unit 40 to ensure it provides equitable education and its mission can be fulfilled by and for all students. By failing to acknowledge different racial and cultural needs, Effingham High School will continue to harm its students of color. We call upon Effingham Unit 40's school board to amend their school policies to be inclusive of all students and prioritize student learning over student appearance. To remedy the harm its policies have already caused and to prevent further discrimination, we urge Effingham High School to allow students to use durags as cultural and purposeful pieces of headwear, retract the current disciplinary infractions imposed on Colin and any other students of color because of headwear policy violations, remove all mention of relevant disciplinary action, and call on student records and issue an apology to all students of color, including Colin. We further urge Effingham High School's Unit 40 to review and analyze how its other policies and actions might be affecting its students of color and implement implicit bias education and training to progress its policies for the entire student body. Please do not hesitate to contact me if you have any questions or would like to discuss this matter. You can contact me at 312-307-2765 or at AKLFETA@ACLU-I-L.org. We look forward to seeing how Effingham High School District, Unit 40, rises to the occasion and creates meaningful change for its students. Sincerely, Amiri Cofleta. I'm sorry, I don't pronounce the word, so, his name.
Thank you. Okay, the next item tonight is we are going to appoint and seat a new board member. We have completed the interview process and we have selected to sit on the board, Desha Ware. So she's going to come up and be, take the oath of office. Desha will fill the open seat from May 24th, 2021 through April 2023, which is the next election. We need, okay, we need a motion to appoint Desha Ware to fill the open seat, May 24th, 2021 through April 2023.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, motion for Brad, second from Jill. Roll call.
Robin.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Jill.
Yes.
Jane.
Yes.
Chad Thompson.
Yes.
And Steve Boe.
Yes.
Congratulations. Okay, so if you would, you have that in front of you?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm just gonna let you read it, so it's into the record, okay?
Okay. I, Desha Ware, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of member of the Board of Education of Effingham Community Unit School District Number 40 in accordance with the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and the laws of the State of Illinois to the best of my ability. I further swear that I shall respect taxpayer interests by serving as a faithful protector of the school district assets. I shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion by my fellow board members and others who seek a hearing before the board while respecting the privacy of students and employees. I shall recognize that a board member has no legal authority as an individual and that decisions can be made only by a majority vote at a public board meeting. I shall abide by majority decisions of the board while retaining the right to seek changes in such decisions through ethical and constructive channels. As part of the Board of Education, I shall accept the responsibility for my role in the equitable and quality education of every student in the school district. I shall foster with the board extensive participation in the community, formulate goals, define outcomes, and set course for the Effingham Unit 40. I shall assist in establishing a structure and an environment designed to ensure all students have the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework. I shall strive to ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement and all conditions affecting the education of our children in compliance with state law. I shall serve as education's key advocate on behalf of students and our community schools to advance the vision of Effingham Unit 40, and I shall strive to work together with the district superintendent to lead the school district toward fulfilling the vision of the board, fulfilling the vision the board has created, fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skills, knowledge, citizenship, and personal development.
All right, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is the handbook item on headwear.
No, this has been discussed for two or three meetings. Information's been shared. I believe everyone has had questions, got those answered, or got answers. So it's still on the agenda as we've been, the last two months have had basically deadlock votes. So it's still on there for discussion and/or action, and so that's where we stand right now.
So the procedure we'll follow will be if someone wants to make a motion on this issue and if there is a second, then the board will discuss, express their thoughts if they want to wish to, and then we'll take a roll call vote. Okay, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that we maintain the substance of the current policy, revising the language to ensure consistent implementation and carve out limited exemption to allow headwear pursuant to a religious or medical exemption.
I'll second.
Steve seconds. All right, now, discussion, anyone like to share their thoughts?
Just logistically, if that were to happen, does that mean that the board revises the policy?
The way that the motion was stated, we already had a discipline meeting, and the policy actually states students are not allowed to wear hats or other headwear, including scarves or sunglasses in the building. And then we would just be adding the medical or religious exemptions to that.
So there wouldn't be, you wouldn't be more specific about what is allowed and what isn't?
No.
It just seems very vague.
And I'll address a little bit of my thought, I've said it before, but in a meeting where you weren't present, one of the issues that this brings up is that this is a policy on all headwear. And of course, it came to our attention because of a specific incident, family, a student, but the policy that we're being asked to alter is one that affects over 1,200 students, grade six through 12. And because of that, in order for it not to be discriminatory to any group of students in those 1,200, we can't just name one specific type of headwear.
So my question is, what is headwear? Is head banned?
Okay, I think that it, let's see, and maybe that's something that Mr. Roberts could clarify. What is...
Well, I think you got the language that I think that's currently recommended as part of your motion, right, in the option?
Well, to clarify what the personal 920 habitat, or personal habits and dress code, there would be, there's three things at the bottom of the policy that would be added. Says, "Students who do not comply with the above guidelines shall be given the opportunity to correct the attire so that it complies with school dress code. The district consider what accommodation may be appropriate when a student provides a note from their caregiver or physician as applicable with religious or medical reason for exemption." So it would have to have a religious or medical reason for the exemption.
I think her question is more, so is a headband allowable, or what is...
That's my concern, is that girls can wear headbands.
What is going to be allowed based on the wording of this?
I think in the last meeting, there was language represented, do you guys still have that?
Well, option two.
No, the one of the things that it recommended was some clarifying language specifically to her question, and I apologize, I don't have it right now.
There was never any... There was never anything directed out as specific that I remember. Option two was that every, it says, "Allow hats and other headwear, but with limits to ensure they don't obstruct the view of the wearer's face, his ears, and other lines of sight." And then prohibit, continue prohibition of any garments that would be considered lewd, vulgar, obscene, disruptive. So there's never been a headband, or a tie, or things like that in the policy. It may have been talked about, but it's not in the policy.
But I think the question is, is that considered headwear?
Is a headband considered?
What is headwear?
That is the question, because I think that's paramount to making a good policy.
Right.
Well, in here, it does say, "Not allowed to wear hats or other headwear, including scarves or sunglasses, in the building. All outerwear, coats, gloves, hand warmers, and earmuffs should be kept in lockers or backpacks."
Right.
Yeah, so.
And I think what she's getting at is it's still a little vague, what is acceptable headwear. Based on, I think in the past, the practicality of it, headbands were acceptable, if I am correct.
Headband, your girl wears it in her hair.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, so how do we distinguish something that's not acceptable? Is it something that covers the entire head? What, I mean, what is the distinction to make it headwear as opposed to a headband?
If a headband show up, if it shows up, say like a headband, like an athletic headband or anything like that, if a girl's in a wore bandanas.
Never let a girl show up.
Ma'am, ma'am, ma'am.
If we ask them to remove like a bandana, but as far as like Mr. Roberts said, a student who says something thin, it's usually hold their hair back, unless something definitely allows it, just again, a thin headband to allow their hair back.
And I'm saying that's appropriate, but it's not clear in the policy.
Policy.
My thought would be anything, like you said, anything that covers the head completely, and that should be in the policy, or anything that covers the ears. I mean, that's one of the other things that we don't want to happen, is covering their ears.
Or their eyes.
Or their eyes.
You've gotta see a student's face.
Right. Yeah, or their eyes, I mean, you must see their eyes.
Right, and I think that one of the reasons that, you know, those exceptions were in the other one, which allowed headgear, but that allowed all kinds of hats when you don't limit, I mean, you can't limit and say, well, this one group of students can wear something, but they can't, because of course, we've got students that will come with cowboy hats, and, you know, farm hats, and all kinds of things that will cover their, you know, their eyes, even if it's not covering their ears. And as a teacher, that's a problem.
For instance, advisor.
Advisor.
Which cover the eyes, and therefore, if it covers the head, it should not be more.
Right, right.
That's my opinion.
And, and, right, and I, again, the whole, my whole, I do believe that, and I understand what you're saying, and we maybe want to revisit that wording, but to go on with a couple of other thoughts, I do, I do want to stress that I, I believe that people should proudly honor their cultural heritage, but we're talking about just the regular school day, we're talking about six or seven hours of a day, and there are still many other, you know, that this policy does not stop students from wearing headwear to school events, it's just during the class day, the school day. And so there's, you know, another 17 or 18 hours where students or anyone would have a choice to proudly honor their cultural heritage. That, to me, I, you know, I respect that. My concern as a teacher, retired teacher, is that the policy impacts the learning environment, and that's where I, I feel becomes the overriding issue in the classroom. You know, students are in a class for 47 or 48 minutes a day, and that's it, and those minutes are very valuable. So anytime that anything becomes a disruption or distraction, those minutes are gone. And if you've ever been in a high school classroom for very long, or in a high school at all, or you think back to when you were in school, you know that it doesn't take a classroom full of students, it only takes a couple of students who, you know, just in a good-hearted way, maybe just take five minutes or 10 minutes of the class period while you talk about, you know, you can't, you can't wear that hat, you can't see behind you, you know, and so, you know, do you have to move a seat, you have to do, you know, all kinds of stuff. So as a, as a teacher, that's my concern. I don't want to put one more thing on a teacher's plate when there are so many important things that they should be concerned with and worried about. And to me, it should focus on those things and on the learning environment and not on appearance, and.
So if I understood right in my notes here, the question, or I'll just throw it out there, a more of a definition of what headwear is, is what, basically, does it cover the head, eyes, and ears? If it does, then it's inappropriate.
Considering that a durag fits close to the head and, you know, it doesn't stick up, or got with the ears, I don't see how it could be any different than a headband that they say is acceptable. Just a little bit extra material.
And I think one of the things, the discussion in the previous months we've had is, after talking to legal representative, these are the options that they provided in the best access or moving forward for the district. One of these two options is what they presented, what they're recommending. So that's why they were presented. We can look at that definition and include that in the motion, or not the motion, but Let me look here. It doesn't, I don't see in here, and looking through it again, scanning it, that it has any specific definition. So if that's something you wanted to add to it, we could. The motion is to maintain the substance of the current policy, however revise the language to ensure consistent implementation and carve out a limited exemption and allow headwear pursuant to religious or medical exemption. I mean, what you're talking about is revising the language. So I guess, you know, if that's a question or recommendation from the full board on this policy or this motion, we could have a definition of covering the head, eyes, and ears. That would be considered headwear.
I think there needs to be some definitive language in there for headgear, because if then we're going after barrettes and headbands and bows.
And we get back to the administration of the policy, right?
Right.
Which, any dress policy is gonna be a, there's subjective in part of that in any decision.
And in both situations, it's subjective. That's the problem.
Well, it just is going to be, I mean, that's, there's not gonna be non-subjectivity
Obviously, this one's been, just speak out loud, this one's been difficult for me. I've went back and forth both ways. I was obviously clearly raised to take off any type of headgear whenever I came inside of a building, a church, a school, whatever. But I feel, you know, in these two recommendations, we've got, maybe we're gonna make a change to it now, but in order for us to be inclusive, if that's what it takes going with option two, I'd rather allow everything and be inclusive of cultural considerations, religious, medical. I, I think the conversation really, to me, feels like it's guilty until proven innocent. We think everybody's gonna come in with something that's gonna be inappropriate, offensive, and not wear it properly. I personally am a big fan of wearing hats, I'm not wearing one tonight, but I wear them all the time and I wear it appropriately. And I was raised to wear things and to treat myself and others with the same respect. And I think a majority of these students will do the same. We'll have a few that won't, that's the reality of the situation. But we'll also have a great number that can do it appropriately. So I prefer, in my opinion, to make policies based upon being inclusive and doing it for the kids that will do a thriveway. Not not do something because a few won't do it appropriately. And I do not want, my final comment, I do not want to disrupt the classroom, but I also don't feel at the end of the day that this will 100% disrupt every classroom all the time. There might be instances, there will always be instances, but I think that's a small percentage. And if we need to make a motion for number two to be inclusive, then I will proudly make that motion.
And for me, I want to trust the kids that they will do the right thing, and be trustworthy, and be respectful, and be all of those things, because we do have a great deal of kids that do follow the rules. My gut says, like, why, why can't we try something, just try it, and put a deadline on it? If this doesn't work by October 15th, it's off the table, and we go, we bring it back, because.
I'd proudly make that motion, too.
Too many kids are wearing big cheese hats or.
Are you saying hats with bills? You're okay with that, too, in classroom? Baseball caps?
I'm okay with it.
I've seen it in the hallway.
I'm personally okay with it.
I've seen them, wearing them.
I think we try it for a few months and see if it works.
If a hat is worn inappropriately, it is down over the eyes.
Which is, it says in here, it can obstruct the wearer's face, ears.
I can see eyes.
Right. And that is in option number two, where it's not to obstruct the view of the wearer's face, ears, or other line of sight.
Some are worn backwards, with the bill in the back.
Or if in your classroom, if it's a rule, just like with a cellphone, take it off, put it in your bag. Everybody's entitled.
You guys will feel bad, students will try to push this as hard as they can take it, sombreros, and blah blah, because.
I believe that would be disruptive to the school environment. Cowboy hat.
But, once you open that door, that door's open.
I mean, both of them are subjective.
And we're gonna have a hard time closing it after that door is, is, is open. My, we would be the only district in one, how far might that would allow headwear? Are they all wrong?
No, I'm not saying they're wrong.
Probably the reason that it's in place.
I would say, let's be a leader again, instead of a follower, and do the right thing.
Or ban them.
I agree with that.
Let's be a leader again, like we used to be.
But, this is an educational environment.
Agreed.
It's not about hats.
It's not at all.
It's not.
That's why I would like to get to a resolution.
If it even disrupts, in my opinion, one or two minutes of every class, that's too much. Those kids are there, aren't, they aren't there to, whatever.
Right.
That's just my opinion.
I think we have to keep in mind, too, we did ask, we've heard from a lot of people, and that has been good to see that there's so much interest in any issue that is involving the school, regardless of what side of the issue they were on. We heard from a lot of parents, we heard from some students, we heard from teachers and other interested people, and I think we all saw the comments that teachers made They did not want headwear worn in the classroom because of the disruption that it could cause. And I, I just feel that, you know, those are the, those are the people that know what goes on in those rooms every day, that they're, that they're, all the things that they're expected to handle and to deal with, and adding one more thing to that list, like a headgear item, and again, talking about, you know, anything, it could be any, any, you know, cowboy hat, a sombrero, it can be a baseball hat, it could be anything, is something they don't want to have to take away from instructional time and the learning environment. So I feel like that's something that we should be respecting. Okay, we have a motion on the floor already in a second, so we do need to take a vote, whether, you know, we have some options here, we can, if we think the language needs to be more specific, we can vote that down and then restate a new motion, or if, you know, whatever. But we do need to vote on the motion on the floor right now, which, which simply says, maintaining the substance of the current policy, however revising language to ensure consistent implementation and carve out a limited exemption to allow headwear pursuant to a religious or medical exemption. And that's all it says, it doesn't define headwear. Okay? Chad, can you hear all that?
Yes, and just to add, just a couple of comments there, I believe that we do need to define the terms a little bit more clearly, as Desha pointed out.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we're voting on the motion on the floor, which does not define headwear, to be clear, okay? Roll call.
Brad Waldorf?
No.
Jill Winley?
No.
Jane Willenberg? No. Chad Thompson?
No.
Desha Ware?
No.
Steve Bone?
Yes.
Robin Klosterman?
No.
Oh.
Yeah, we, we were just, okay, motion failed, so we can, yeah, we can define headwear more clearly in a different motion.
Well, I mean, it, what it could say, and just, you know, looking through this, is revise the language to ensure consistent implementation and carve out a limited exemption, to revise the language to define headwear as any garment. I'm just talking out loud here. Covers the head, eyes.
I think with the eyes, because it's not covering the eyes, it's obscuring your line of.
Okay.
It's obscuring your vision of your.
Right. I think it's anything that, yeah, anything that would cover, come over the front of the face.
Obstructs the eyes, is what you're, is it a?
Okay, maintain the substance of the current policy, however revise the language to define headwear as any garment that covers the head, ears, and/or obstructs the eyes or face. to ensure consistent implementation and carve out a limited exemption to allow headwear pursuant to religious or medical exemption.
Okay, can you read that again?
Sure. Maintain the substance of the current policy, however revise the language to define headwear as any garment that covers the head, ears, and/or obstructs the eyes or face, and ensures consistent implementation, and carve out a limited exemption to allow headwear pursuant to religious or medical exemption. There's a lot of exemptions in there, it's language.
Is that clear?
Do you think that covers the head is clear? Covers the head.
I don't know, I mean, problem is, policy's not gonna cover everything.
Yeah.
You try to write as best you can. What's the intent? That's, that's the issue, right? I mean, that's always an issue with a policy. So is the intent not to have head coverings in the classroom or in the school? So is the intent not to have head coverings in the classroom or in the school? That means covers the head, so. I mean, that's what I, you're asking me, that's, that's, that's what I would say.
It's better than it was.
Yeah.
Okay, do you want to read that one more time?
Maintain the substance of the current policy, however revise the language to define headwear as any garment that covers the head, ears, and/or obstructs the eyes or face and ensures consistent implementation and carve out a limited exemption to allow headwear pursuant to religious or medical exemption.
Okay, do we have a motion? For that, entertaining the motion that Mark just read. Motion by Steve, is there a second? Desha's second. Any other discussion? Jane, roll call.
Robin Klosterman?
Yes.
Brad Waldorf?
No.
Jill Winley?
No.
Jane Willenberg, no. Chad Thompson?
Yes.
Desh aware?
Yes.
Steve Bone?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. All right. Next, we have Mr. Fox with the financial report.
And we ended April with fund balance, the net fund balance was $26,837,370.68. The operating funds made up $20,742,907.83. And the HLS funds made up $3,499,213.72. Revenue received in the education fund, locally, we received $744,827.48. From the state, we received $606,368.84. And federally, we received $238,301.7. Expenses over $5,000 are listed out separately in your packet. And recommendations this month are to reimburse the impressed account in the amount of $499.71 and the payment of bills in the amount of $1,317,708.2. Can I answer any questions on any of that for you?
No, there's a better show coming.
I saw in the packet there was a list of later checks, is that standard practice?
No, that's not. COVID, COVID hit us last year, we had several field trips that were planned and parents had paid $3 to go, or some parents paid $8 to go, and we issued them refund checks last year. Most of them then said, we don't want these, we're not going to cash these. And so this, well, a year later, we have now avoided those checks. So.
Okay, anything else for Mr. Fox?
I did have a question about, there was a payment to Pepsi for the Pepsi contract. Was that for product or is that?
It was probably a payment from Pepsi. We received $22,000 from Pepsi, was that what it was?
I thought it was a payment.
If it was a payment, it was probably one of the orders for the kitchen at the high school. We had a lot of issues getting our orders this year from Pepsi, like everybody else. And so when we would get one, it would be a very big one. But we did receive our $22,000 payment from Pepsi, which is our annual contract for them being able to sell their product in the district, so.
Okay, anything else for Mr. Fox? Then I I will entertain a motion to approve the financial report, to reimburse the impressed account in the amount of $499.71 and the payment of bills in the amount of $1,317,708.2.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Jane, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Brad. Roll call.
Jill Winley?
Yes.
Jane Willenberg, yes. Chad Thompson?
Yes.
Steve Bone?
Yes.
Robin Klosterman?
Yes.
Desh aware?
Yes.
Brad Waldorf?
Yes.
All right, we're moving on to the consent agenda.
Did you walk right back in?
I'm sorry. I was, I was trying to see where I was here.
There's just a couple of things I need to clarify on here, if possible. The preparation for the FY '22 budget, it's time to, we've been looking at that and beginning with that. We just want to make sure that each year we, we, there's a budget calendar, there'll be a tentative budget proposed, and then the budget is actually voted on and we have a hearing in September, so that's in the packet, just kind of spells out what those, that process is. And then also the summer's camp schedule, we're, we're going to follow current COVID guidelines, and as those change, we'll make adjustments as well. So, you know, those kind of just changed and they'll may change again in June, we don't know for sure, so. But want to make sure, we have some transportation, and that's why we bring it to the board, because there are some summer transportation and trips that do travel, so we want to make sure that the board is aware of those as well.
I saw that on some of those summer camp items, there was something about if, if travel is allowed or not.
Well, I think, you want to talk about that, I mean, this is a few years ago, when we had, when Rem was here, we had, when we started doing some summer travel, because we're using school district transportation, the insurance wanted us to make sure we have, that that's somehow in the minutes or approved. So if there's unfortunately any issue that there, you know, that there's no
I thought that there was a reference to whether something to do with COVID, whether
Well, that, that was last year, whether or not our teams would do any traveling in the summer based on the the COVID guidelines. And so as long as the guidelines are what they are now,
What they are, then it's good.
Teams are allowed to travel and, and other schools are allowing teams in to do that much more limited than what it was three years ago, but it is allowing.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other questions on any of the items in the consent agenda? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Jill moves, second?
I'll second.
Brad's second, roll call.
Chad Thompson?
Yes.
Steve Bone?
Yes.
Robin Klosterman?
Yes.
Brad Waldorf?
Yes.
Jill Winley?
Yes.
Desh aware?
Yes.
All right, we do have some correspondence this evening. Excuse me, I'd like to read. We have a thank you, your kind expression of sympathy and friendship will always remain in our memories, thank you for your thoughtfulness, the family of Larry Brown. We have a thank you note from the EJHS staff, they would like to extend their sincere, sincere thanks for our kindness and thoughtfulness in remembering us during Teacher Appreciation Week. We enjoyed the donuts, they were a sweet treat to start our week, thank you, EJHS admin and staff. We have a thank you, Unit 40 School Board and Staff, thank you so much for the beautiful plant and for your thoughtfulness during this difficult time, your gesture was very comforting and appreciated. Sincerely, Josh, Delaina, and family, Robinson. And a thank you for donuts and cookies and everyone signed from Southside. Those were the correspondence that we had this, this month. All right, superintendent's report.
You're cold, you're hot.
Like I wore the wrong outfit.
Okay. So enrollment, which is interesting, we, you know, we got it out in March of last year, so we really only have to compare against March. So we're actually, I think, six more students than we had in March, which is, which is good, so we really don't have any April or May numbers, so the next couple of months will be, you know, we'll have to go with what we have. Just to make sure the board is aware, we have three FOIA requests we're working through, information on the bowling policies and records, one about historical discipline records, and also additional discipline records. So we're in the process of gathering that information, but we do not have a cost estimate at this time. Want to congratulate Coach Obie Farmer, I don't know if you heard or not, but he was named Decatur Herald Review Coach of the Year for Boys Basketball, so we want to say congratulations to him. I wanted to bring up the competitive, EHS competitive cheer team, Coach Dana Custer, this is the first year we actually had a JV competitive cheer, cheer team and varsity as well, but this is the first year for JV. So JV, they went undefeated, they placed first at Highland and Peoria competition. And I'll just read the names of the JV teammates, Paige Calber, Aleah Wimmer, Matty Reiman, Serenity Traxler, Gabby Hasslett, McKenna Beckwitz, Abby Cochran, Addison Holtz, is Holstein? Holstein, that's what I thought, Brianna Allwork. So congratulations to them. And then on the varsity, after never making IHSA State, this group made it for the second year in a row. Last year they made it, and this year they did as well, a little different, I think they filmed, filmed it and had been sent in the film, which is, which is different. But they placed, they also placed second at sectionals with a score of 91.26, which according to Coach Custer was the highest score that's ever been achieved at the EHS. And also the regular season, they placed third at Highland and second at Peoria in those competitions. So varsity team members, Lizzie Minehart, Micah Donaldson, Emma, Emmy Albert, Bella Cronewetter, Reagan Hopper, Ella Harmon, Savannah Morrissey, Anna Sig, Logan Mayfield, Riley Arnt, Zoe Hodge, Jada Davis, Brooklyn Belcher, Gabby Craig, and Haley Lewis. So congratulations to them. Also, three more things. Christ Church, we want to say thank you to them, they came last week and visited each building, thank the staff for their efforts, teaching staff, administrators, and they handed out 70 dozen donuts. That's a lot of donuts. So that's, yeah, I found that out, I'm like, 70, that's, anyway, that's quite a bit. I know this was in the paper, but I want a big thank you to Joey and Manny Trupiano, any county businesses and individuals who donated to the Teach Pub Grub 2021 Project. So just a total of $50,000 was donated and was turned into 2,000 gift cards from 41 establishments. So every employee, educational staff employee across Effingham County received two $25 gift certificates. And so we want to thank you for acknowledging all the educational employees across the county. I actually ran into Joey last night out by my house, told him thank you personally, and, and he said they're trying to plan something for the fall, so thank you to him. And then finally, just in general, just to thank the staff and administrators for their efforts this school year, it's been rather odd, obviously, it's not a regular year, but you know, when we started this in August, many, and myself included a little bit, were trying to get in a couple of weeks. And then, you know, seeing if we would have to go remote. So, but we didn't, we didn't shut down, we kept moving. And so I also want to thank the parents for their flexibility and understanding. There was quarantining, there was students in and out, it was not the best scenario, but everybody worked together to the best of their ability. And so I want to say thank you and appreciate it.
We lost Chad, he's just dialing back in.
Are you there?
Hello?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
So just to say thank you to the staff and to the administrators and to also the parents and the community in general, just the community support, it's really been, been helpful and hopefully we won't have to do this next year.
I'll add one more thing, I saw that there was no report for the foundation, but I'll mention the Unit 40 Education Foundation did award 54 scholarships, the most ever. And that was, again, kind of piggybacking on what Mark just said, that was remarkable because the people, the businesses, the families, the, you know, local peoples came forward because the foundation could have no fundraisers, and they really came through, so we were able to give the most ever. So a big shout out to everybody that supported the foundations and of course, that resulted in scholarships for the EHS seniors. All right, new business, Jason, bus stop arm camera.
Okay. A few months back, we voted to purchase new buses for next year. And in that, we talked about making stop arm cameras standard option on all the buses we buy moving forward. We talked about the number of stop arm violations we're seeing every week, and the board asked me to go out and find some pricing on putting stop arm cameras on our current fleet. In doing so, we received a lot of feedback. We felt like, in looking at the pricing and talking to Midwest Bus Sales, doing two years worth of buses, so doing the 2020 and the 2021 buses we had purchased made sense. Anything older than that, it was, the cost went up significantly. So what I have in front of you is to do the six buses that were purchased in 2020.
Thank you, it's losing its connection.
Yeah.
Sorry about that, guys.
That's all right. So to buy the six buses from 2020 is $8,114.38. To do the seven buses purchased in 2021 is an additional $8,558.35. So to do those 13 buses along with the seven that we had already purchased, those, those are becoming standard with them, so we would actually have 20 buses in the fleet equipped with Star Farm cameras. That costs us $16,672.73. And then what we would do is we would put those in our highest violation areas so that the areas we're seeing the most have a bus equipped so that law enforcement has what they need from video cameras to be able to, you know, follow up. And then we would make, again, make that standard option on all future purchases of buses, so.
What's the life expectancy? You know what I'm trying to say.
Expectancy.
How long do we keep a bus in our fleet?
We depreciated over five years, and so we tried to sell it at that sixth year, so.
So wouldn't it make sense to go back before, you know, three
You would be putting a brand new camera on a bus that would go out in one or two years.
One or two years, that would make sense, okay.
And plus, they're not equipped the same as the new buses, so it costs more to even put them on, so.
All right. I entertain a motion to approve the purchase of stop arm cameras from Midwest Bus Sales at a cost of $16,672.73.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Brad, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, second by Desha. Any more discussion? Okay, roll call.
Desh aware?
Yes.
Chad Thompson?
Yes.
Steve Bone?
Yes.
Robin Klosterman?
Yes.
Brad Waldorf?
Yes.
Jill Winley?
Yes.
Jane Willenberg, yes.
All right, Board Office roof project.
Okay, we've talked about this roof for a while, it has several issues with the roof. If we were to go up there now, you would see standing water and it hasn't rained in quite some time. There are sections of the roof that over time have sunk down below the actual roof drain holes in, in the side of, in the parapet wall. And so we're constantly holding water, which, as you know, on a rubber roof, when water sits too long, it finds its way in somewhere. And so this roof here would have to be a complete tear off and rebuild. We would tear the entire roof off, we would build it to where we now level it out and water runs directly to the drains, and then we would go back with an EPDM or rubber roof, which would have a 20-year warranty on it. And then at the end of that 20 years, what you do is you look at spray coating it, which gives you another 20-year warranty, and you continue that process. But we would need to build this up to where it actually drains correctly to the roof drains and gets the water off the building. So we had Midstate Construction come and give us a quote on this, the quote came in at $48,880. Originally it told me 48,900, but it's 48,000, eight, or $48,880, okay? And, you know, you can kind of see in the packet that they gave, it's exactly what the plan is and what they want to do. That does not have to be bid because it is a replacement of a current roof and it is under $50,000. of a current roof, and it is under $50,000. So we went through it, and before they knew we were going to do the project, I asked for a budget number if they were going to do the project, and this is exactly the same number they gave me months ago. So whenever we talked about it, buildings and grounds, a long time ago, so.
How old is the current roof?
It was original. So I don't know what year this was built, but.
I have no clue.
Long, long ago.
You need to look. Somebody just has a little more gray than I do.
Are there other companies that do this type of project that we could get quotes from?
There are other companies, yes. Well, and what we were trying to do is get it done in June so that we could get it on this year's budget because there is money there to use for that. If you want me to go out and ask other companies, we can do that. We'll just put it off and do it later in the summer. The reason, the biggest reason why we need to get this done is we have a couple of offices upstairs that when it does rain, there's water on the desk, and we just got to get that taken care of. That's, we got the basement taken care of, which is great. It has totally changed the building. When we do have rain, you know, the Woods Basement Project that you approved a few months back, it was completed last month, and it has done a great job for the building, so.
And this might help, because I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but over the course of the year, we've done numerous business with Midstate, and it seems like they're always the lowest bid.
Over, over the previous 15 years, they're almost always at the, at the lowest bid. And what we have is we, I have them come in every year and inspect our roofs for warranty work, and then we turn that into Carlisle Roofing, the things that they find, because we want to make sure our roofs stay healthy. So all the roofs we've replaced the last four or five years, we have them come in and walk the roofs with us every year and give us a list of things to turn in so that that's taken care of. And sometimes they get that work, sometimes they don't. Carlisle issues those work orders, so.
And did it, it said that if we bid the project, we would pay an architect to develop plans and drawings at an additional cost?
Yeah, so the architect's going to be at least 10% on top to, so they're going to take what they believe it should cost, and they're going to add 10% to that, and they're going to charge you that from the get-go. So that's another cost we were trying to avoid. If this is the price they gave me months ago, and then when we said, okay, we were ready to do the work, what's it going to cost? They gave me the same cost. I just felt like we didn't necessarily want to throw another, you know, $5,000 at it for architect fees, so. But whatever the board would like to do.
No, I think it sounds good. So would they do that 20-year recondition, recover, whatever you said?
They can come back in and, well, assuming they're still around 18 years.
That's what I was going to say, there are others that do that.
Yes, absolutely. There are a lot of different companies that come in and do the spray coating. And what they do is it's a foam coating that they put over the top, and they seal. We would look at doing that here, but this one's to the point that it's not eligible for that, so.
Okay.
Down the road, you may see us come to you with some other roofs in the district, the few that we have left, and want that option, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve replacement of the Board Office Roof at a cost of $48,880. Steve makes a motion. Is there a second?
I can second.
Brad seconds. Is there any other discussion? Questions for Mr. Fox? Okay, roll call.
Steve Bone.
Yes.
Dasha Ware.
Yes.
Robin Klosterman.
Yes.
Brad Waldorf.
Yes.
Jill Wendling.
Yes.
Jane Willenberg, yes. Chad Thompson.
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, next, moving on to the EZ representative?
Yes, each year, we're part of the EZ Co-op, and there is a governing board for the Co-op, and the governing board has individual board members from the 11 counties. EZ is over 11 counties. And so each district has, needs to have a representative, and we usually try to get a, an alternate, an alternate just in case. Jane has done this in the last few years, and she let me know before the meeting that she was elected as vice chair at her last meeting, so. So those meetings have been held virtually this past year. Usually, they're held up in Mattoo next to Sarah Bush Linking. That's where the EZ offices are. And it's usually, what, the fourth Tuesday in August and usually the fourth Tuesday in February. There's two meetings a year unless there's additional, and I don't think we've ever had another meeting. But she's willing to do that again, correct? Okay, but we would need maybe an alternate.
Who's the alternate now?
I think Steve is.
However, I would like to nominate Brad Waldorf.
I was going to say Chad Thompson.
So.
I could be the alternate.
And then we would let EZ know, and then they directly reach out to me and to Jane, or Jane and I, excuse me, and when the meetings are upcoming and things like that.
All right. Are you going to arm wrestle over the alternate, or?
I'll do it.
Okay, all right.
I wasn't going to wrestle. So he's going to take it.
I'll entertain a motion to approve Jane Willenberg as Unit 40 EZ representative. Excuse me, and Steve Bone as alternate.
Motion.
Motion by Brad. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jill. Roll call.
Robin Klosterman.
Yes.
Brad Waldorf.
Yes.
Dasha Ware.
Yes.
Jill Wendling.
Yes.
Jane Willenberg, yes. Chad Thompson.
Yes.
Steve Bone.
Yes.
Excuse me. All right, treasures bond. Jason?
There's a requirement annually for the district to purchase a treasures bond for the person who pays the bills. That would be me. And so given the HLS funds that we are still holding for this last phase of the project, this year, the bond cost is $10,027. We hope that after we finish this last phase of the junior high project, those HLS funds will be used up, and hopefully that cost will go back down. So I would ask that you approve that.
I'll make that motion.
All right, the motion to approve the treasures bond through Travelance Casualty and Surety Company made by Steve. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Dane. Roll call.
Robin Klosterman.
Yes.
Brad Waldorf.
Yes.
Jill Wendling.
Yes.
Dasha Ware.
Yes.
Jane Willenberg, yes. Chad Thompson.
Yes.
Steve Bone.
Yes.
All right, next, notice to amend the FY '21 budget.
Okay. So every year, we sit down and we look at the budget throughout the year, but then when it comes to this time of year, we need to look at, how did everything play out? Do we need to amend anything? So there are several different things we want to amend. Most of these are accounting, moving this here, making sure we get them into the right fund, the right fund line item before the end of the year. So in Fund 10, we're going to increase IDEA pre-K revenue by $55,229, increase IDEA revenue by $698,537. We're going to increase Medicaid administration revenue by $40,000. And then we're going to increase IDEA expenses by $7,770,198. And we're going to increase IDEA pre-K expenses by $29,800. So the IDEA change arounds there, so that's, IDEA was new this year in the way it was administered. In the past, EZ, our Co-op, wrote the grant, and the money was administered through us to them, but we never really were a part of that, coming into our fund and then being paid out until the very end of the year. The fund, the, the grant had to be used up, and then we paid the, we did additional fees on top of that. The law changed. Funds now, all the funds have to run through the district and then be paid out. So that was still very gray when we wrote our budget back in August. And so as that's cleared up throughout the year, this is the amendment we want to make to make sure each of the money, the revenue coming in and the expenses going out hit the correct line items in our overall budget so that our auditor will be happy when he comes in later this year, so.
And you might explain what IDEA is.
That is special education money. And so we were part of the EZ Co-op out of Charleston. And so in the past, they had written the grant, we approved the grant, and it goes that way. But that is so we can do that part. So these changes will take the estimated fund balance on June 30th from $9,338,568 to $9,329,336. That would be a decrease of $6,232 in the ed fund of what we had budgeted, okay? Fund 40, Transportation Fund, we have an increase, expected sale revenue by $142,990, increase trans new lease revenue by $15,568, increase vehicles, which would be our buses' expenses, by $158,558, and an increase in transportation principal expenses by $98,374. So to explain all of that, we sold buses last year after the budget was put in. We were able to sell those, and we got that revenue in. We needed to put that into the appropriate revenue budget. We also then paid for buses, and we did not have a depreciation schedule yet when the budget was approved originally in the fall. After you get the depreciation schedule, we can then put those expenses directly in the right line in the correct amount. So we had in there budgeted, but we didn't have the exact amount in the right line. So that's why we changed Fund 40. Now, these changes will take the estimated fund balance on June 30th from $2,983,125 to $2,913,751. That is a decrease of $69,374 in Fund 40. Any questions so far? Okay. Fund 50, the Municipal Retirement Social Security Fund, that was an increase in CPPRT revenue by $4,593. This is something where we get that money in, and then we have to break it out into different funds. We just didn't know how much we were going to get into Fund 50, and so we just need to add that money in so that the accounting for the auditor is correct. So this change will take the estimated fund balance on June 30th from $1,302,139 up to $1,306,732, increase of $44,593. And then Fund 80, which is our TORT fund, we want to increase certified salary expenses by $10,000, and we want to increase insurance expenses by $350,000. What we'd like to do is we would like to go ahead and get ahead on our SRO payment. So we'd like to pay next year's SRO payment on this year's TORT fund, as well as pay next year's insurance payment, which is due exactly on July 1. We'd like to get that approved and paid before July 1 so that we can issue that ahead of time. So we would add those expenses to this year, and then we would not have those expenses next year. These changes will take the estimated fund balance on June 30th, 2021, from $492,578 to $132,578. This is a decrease of $360,000 for those two things. Any questions I can answer on that? The process here is, you know, this tonight, and then we would have a hearing at the June meeting at 6 o'clock. Anybody who'd like to speak about these changes would be welcome to do so. And then after the hearing, we would approve this amended budget to be the final budget to go to the ROE and to the state to close out the year.
Okay, would entertain a motion to approve the FY '21 tentative amended budget as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Jill. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Jane. Roll call. Is there any more discussion or questions for Mr. Fox? Are we getting any closer to having a School Finance for Dummies course that I've asked you for?
We can do that. We have, we have a full board.
We have a full board now, and Mr. Fox promised that he would give us a little, yeah.
And I think a calendar would be great to show you everything as it's coming up in the different months, so, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Brad Waldorf.
Yes.
Jill Wendling.
Yes.
Jane Willenberg, yes. Chad Thompson.
Yes.
Dasha Ware.
Yes.
Steve Bone.
Yes.
Robin Klosterman.
Yes.
Okay, approval to dispose of surplus district property.
Okay. If I, if I had had this letter when we did the trucks and all that, the buses last month, we would have done it then. But Mr. Mason came to me, again, he's very thankful for the band purchases, the uniforms that we purchased previously. But they have decided now it's time to get out with the old, so they have room to do what they want to with the new. So they are requesting to be able to dispose of those. I would work with them to get that done, and then those funds would then be, you know, put into the District General Fund, and then we would look at redistributing those through his band budget the next year once those funds were back. So we would ask permission to work through the, through the channels to dispose of those appropriately. I think they do want to donate a few to the theater program and different things, but then we'd look to sell the rest of them.
Okay, I'd entertain a motion to declare the old EHS band uniforms as surplus.
I was just, I was trying to, I figured there was a market for them.
As surplus property and no longer needed for school purposes and to direct administration to sell said property.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Steve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Brad. Any other discussion?
One question. If we're selling them to just anybody, do we remove any of our logos or anything from those before we sell those?
That, that's a question I have for Mr. Mason, is what we do about the shoulder. The shoulder is embroidered with Effingham Band on it. What do they put, a patch over it or something like that? We need to discuss that. But I wanted to see if you were okay with that first.
I know it's sad that they wouldn't get much money from them because they're very old, but I still would think that if they, if there really was a school that didn't have uniforms and they wanted them, I'd much rather see us even, if we don't get much money for them, have a school get them where they would have uniforms as opposed to just selling them to people to wear at Halloween.
Last time we did this, we were able to basically kind of sell giveaway to a small school.
Right.
And they basically put on the back, they put their letter for their, their school, and they used them for several years, so.
And I would hope that would be the direction we would try to go.
We just can't, we can't expect to make a lot of money.
Right, right. Well, and I think the question about the logo that's concerning to me is
that they're just going out to the public or to a resale shop. Then it does have our logo on it, and if someone is wearing it inappropriately or doing something with our name on it, not a good idea for it to be in the public. So I would hope that we use some good judgment when we get rid of those with what we can do to remove our logo for
Absolutely.
All right, anything else before we vote? All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor then to declare the old EHS band uniform surplus property, no longer needed for school purposes, and direct the administration to sell that property. Roll call.
Jane Willenberg, yes. Chad Thompson.
Yes.
Steve Bone.
Yes.
Robin Klosterman.
Yes.
Brad Waldorf.
Yes.
Jill Wendling.
Yes.
Dasha Ware.
Yes.
All right, I believe we are ready to move into closed session. I'll entertain a motion to enter into closed session for student discipline cases, appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the district or legal counsel for the district, and collective negotiating matters between the district and its employees or their representatives, or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees.
Motion.
Motion by Steve. Is there a second? I'll second. Roll call.
Dasha Ware.
Yes.
Chad Thompson.
Yes.
Steve Bone.
Yes.
Robin Klosterman.
Yes.
Brad Waldorf.
Yes.
Jill Wendling.
Yes.
Jane Willenberg, yes.
All right, we'll enter closed session now.